We thank you for the many, many women overseas who are defending our country, both past and present, as well as their families. We thank you for the many, many women in law enforcement in uniform, EMS, first responders, fire, for their sacrifices of protecting us, especially in this time of uncertainty as we move forward and develop plans. We ask that you give us wisdom to make the right decisions so that we may ensure the safety of each and every citizen of Hart County. In your name we pray. Amen. Just felt like that was appropriate. This time I call to order the call meeting on Wednesday, March 18th, the Hart County Board of Commissioners. We put together a broad agenda, but we were going to break out some individual things and then we'll discuss those topics as we move forward. We probably could have argued that we could have invoked the emergency meeting clause in the open records, open meetings laws, but we didn't in the spirit of transparency. So there's a lot of things we want to talk about and I'd like to just go through and list them and put together these bullet points in the agenda and then we'll approve the agenda and then we'll get started. One thing we'll talk about is courthouse operations. Solid Waste Transfer Station in Convenience Center. The administrative building here. Did I miss anything, Terrell?
Recreation. Terrell, we'll briefly hit the public safety side. EMS, law enforcement.
That's tax assessors office, too.
Tax assessors, elections.
Board of Elections.
Right.
I'm gonna put library on here, too, even though they've already made a decision. We'll talk about that more later.
And recreation.
Number one.
And then we need to talk about the CDBG block grant for the Water and Sewer Authority. Walter, did I miss anything that you need to cover?
I don't believe so. I think those are the general areas. We can, we'll need to, of course, kind of feather into it, talk about open meetings. And I can tell you that the Open Records Act request is going to be, the courts are going to alter the way those, the Open Records Act responses are handled for the time being. The three-day rule will not apply for a while.
Okay. With, I'll go back over these and if I miss anything, please let me know. Courthouse operations, senior center, solid waste, transfer station, and convenience centers, administrative offices. I'm gonna put 911 on here, too. Tax assessors, elections, library, recreation department, and then the CDBG, CDBG block grant for the Water and Sewer Authority.
When you say public safety, Walter?
Well, you'll catch the EMS 911, just generally for all of them. All of them got the same mandates about what we're doing.
If there's no other changes, could I get a motion that we approve the agenda as amended?
I make a motion we approve as amended?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Sayer and a second by Commissioner Carter. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Before we get into this, there's been a lot of work that's gone on behind the scenes. A lot of time spent on conference calls. Terrell has done a tremendous job in this, in amongst everything else in running the county, preparing for this. There's a lot of things that's going on. We felt like tonight we needed to get some actions in place because things that this board can address, as well as this gives the public an opportunity to see what all we have done, actions we're taking place, the media's here, the meeting's on YouTube, so everything's out there. I wish we could say that this was not going to be changing. It's constantly evolving every minute of every day. There's some kind of change coming out. I do want to say upfront, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the whole board, I'm speaking me personally, and I want to say this because there's business owners out there who are very concerned right now with what's going on. I've had calls asking, are we considering a curfew? Are we considering making businesses close? To my knowledge, this board has no intent of any of that. And I just want to go on record, and if anybody else wants to speak on that, you're more than welcome to. But we, this board has had absolutely no discussion on anything of that nature. So I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that, that that message is out there. Because there are business owners who are struggling right now. You look at some in the restaurant business, they have made decisions to change the way they operate. They made those decisions themselves without any involvement or any mandates coming from this board. So I just want to make sure that that's out there before we get started because we do have a lot of things to do. We've got a lot of responsibility on our shoulders and we will always be measured by how we handle this. We're not gonna make everybody happy. There's gonna be some inconveniences, but we all got to man up in the end and be responsible adults and do the right thing. So with that being said, we'll start with courthouse operations. We've got our probate judge, our magistrate judge, our clerk of court, and our tax commissioner here with us. I've spoken to some and I know there's some concern about closing the offices and continuing to operate, but just closing the offices so that there's a barricade or there's, you know, for the safety of all involved. Legally, we can't close the courthouse, but we can leave the courtroom open and then have the constitutional officers shut their doors, keep it locked, and you guys can manage your business. And I don't know if anybody wants to say anything. Thomas?
First off, I'm here with concerns and I've come tonight along with, I've come to my fault. Thank you.
I've come this evening, along with the other constitutional officers, I've come to be informed and I've come to inform, as our governor has declared a state of emergency, the Supreme Court Justice has, as long with our chief superior court judge. But I just want to inform the commissioners. First, I want to thank Terrell Partain, our county administrator, for all the great efforts that he has put forth tirelessly, along with our IT tech, Lisa Cartley, she's done a tremendous job around our offices. But I've come to inform, and mostly just to inform you, that we have let the public know that our office is open, the courthouse doors are open. We cannot close our courthouse doors. I've been informed of that. But we just want to inform the public that many, many of the nonessential duties of my court can be done online, they can be done on in-court, easy file things of that nature. The essential job that my court does, I do issue all warrants for all law enforcement and I do first appearance hearings or bond hearings if they're normally called. But I've just come tonight just to listen, to be informed, and to inform the commissioners of that. Thank you for this call meeting and for allowing me just to share that a little bit with you. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Joey, just to echo Thomas, we have it locked, we're still open. I've reached out to attorneys, abstracters, bankers, offered them my e-filing access. We set up temporary passwords to allow them to work from their offices, their homes if they don't want to come to our office. But we are open. We're kind of pushing folks out in the hallway and I put a little thing on Facebook, just reminding everybody about that, trying not to offend anybody, but if I can get them out in the hallway, we can talk to them out there and deal with them in the hall. But we have reached out to the attorneys. If you haven't heard from us, or if you're interested in getting that website, get with me and I'll give it to you. It's free and you got 200 credits, print credits, up until April 13th until this judicial emergency order runs out. But I think I speak for all four of you. We have it locked and we're open for business.
Okay. So as far as an action that this board would take, I think it would be appropriate that we do limit access. And if anybody has any objections, you guys will be, kind of be expected to communicate to the public what you're doing, how you're doing it, how you're handling it, because obviously the offices do have to remain open. And, you know, I don't, we don't, we're not in the constitutional officer business, so that's why. But we want to support you and that, and we want to make sure that all the employees, as well as the taxpayers are all protected because, you know, we still, there's a lot of unknowns. So could I get a motion that we allow the constitutional officers to close their offices and communicate to the public as need be in the operations and how they're conducting business?
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Teasley, the second.
I second.
Second by Commissioner Sayer. Any more discussion? Public comment?
I got a question. Are all of y'all doing exactly the same thing?
Similar.
When you say closed.
Let me allow you to, yes.
The Supreme Court judge has sent a word down, I cannot lock my, I have to.
But you can put, you can keep your door closed and put a sign.
It stays closed daily, but we were advised by the Supreme Court and we shall not lock our door. It has to stay unlocked.
Okay.
That's my understanding of the ruling.
You can know that.
You can restrict entry, but you can't lock it.
Do we even need to?
Do we even need to do anything?
We don't, we don't really need to do nothing, do we?
Well, we've got, we're in the process of putting up warning signs for the public. Explain the situation. Try to call in first if you can't hand it over the phone, and then let the departmental people work out when they want to see and how they want to see them. And we're trying to put everything we possibly can online where they can get to it there. But again, they run their department, it's not me.
Right.
But, you know, we are taking those steps and doing it. Mind just reading the ruling, I think you're talking about, doesn't mind standing, too.
We put up signs Friday afternoon, just, you know, tell them, if you feel like you've got the ruling or whatever, please don't come in.
We'll support you on that.
Guys, I got, I got a lady expecting and I got a lady with kidney, kidney issues. And I got one that went home yesterday with a virus. So, you know, I'm a little concerned about the immune system of them and the public that's coming in, but Supreme Court says the door has to be unlocked. And I think I speak for Mary, her student, and Madam Trump, you know, tomorrow.
Okay. Well, let's just, if we could, just withdraw the motion, the second, and amend it to just support our constitutional officers and their efforts on their.
I can, I can make it to support our constitutional officers.
I got a motion, the second.
I second.
All right. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would like to invite each commissioner, Terrell's always in our office, as is Lisa, but you're always welcome to come by, talk to me, must have, or call me, and let you share as well. Thank you.
Thank you all. Moving on to the senior center, Terrell and I talked multiple things going on here. We've got Meals on Wheels there, we've got seniors who come to get meals as well. We talked about just basically shutting everything down other than the meals. Has anything changed on that?
Yeah, no, no. Basically, what we've done is shut the public traffic off into the center itself. We'll still serve the meals. If they can drive to town, they can drive, plenty can pick up. The ones we're picking up with the van, if they need the meals, they'll take the van, take the meals to them. And Lisa's actually personally talked to every one of these people. Before we done this, because we backed up and punished right in the middle, we were gonna do one thing Friday, do Monday, Tuesday, the world changed and we had to do something else. So none of that will stop. We've made, Lisa's made arrangements with the Meals on Wheels folks, if they got to be shut in for a couple weeks, they get something, those meals will be brought out to them still, even if it was under, you know, set quarantine or whatever. But other than all the staff working, the door, just public access is.
What about public, Terrell?
It's the same way. Only thing, they're screening all those patients, all those riders, and that's limited to elderly people that's got a doctor's office appointment, people that need to go get their groceries, no visitation kind of transport. Avita's still shut down out there. That really is the bulk of the transport out there is Avita patients. That's shut down. Avita's shut down, so that takes a load off transit.
Got anything missing? So recommendation would be on the senior center, just to restrict public traffic in. And how long do you want to do that?
I would say give it two weeks and let's see where it goes and we may have to do something different between here and that time.
March 31st should be good. That's two weeks from yesterday. March 31st. That's kind of what everybody, the date everybody else is using.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's fine. We will have to reevaluate all this stuff pretty much on a daily basis.
So could I get a motion that we move forward with that on the senior center through March 31st? As a caveat to that, if something were to change, just empower our county administrator to make whatever administrative decision he needs to make, just let us know.
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Carter, a second by Commissioner Teasley. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously.
Hey Lisa, how many meals are y'all delivering, do you know, on the Meals on Wheels?
Right now we have 58 lines.
58. Okay, thank you.
Next one I had down here was solid waste, transfer station, and convenience centers. This one's gonna be a challenge. The reason being is some of our employees are in the target groups, as well as, right now, our solid waste transfer station is open till seven o'clock during the week, just like the transfers, other transfers, other convenience centers are. And then it's open to two on Saturdays. And I don't know, I mean, we talked about just closing those, but it's gonna create inconvenience.
Yeah, I would like to, the other idea we kind of threw around, we're trying to get some kind of, whether we could block off the, and the reason we're worried about that, like I say, most of the operators are in the high-risk group. And that's the last thing we want to get some of these people sick. We discussed somehow putting the bags outside and let the people get the bags and leave the money outside with the person, and they would come face-to-face contact. We're gonna look into something like that first. And I need to talk with them, I'd like to get their opinion. If they don't feel, if, you know, these are fairly older people and if they don't feel comfortable with that, we may have to just shut some of them down and let people go to the main transfer station or something. I don't, I don't have a real good plan for that one at this point.
See, I mean, if we were to alternate our trans, convenience centers as far as operational standpoint, split them in half.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be something we'll get to. But, you know, I just hadn't had time to sit down and talk to Greg and his staff about what's the best thing to do.
Some of them might have a good idea how you could do it.
That's exactly. And again, y'all keep telling me what a job I've done, I appreciate all the job each looking on. I called and I said, tell me what we need to do. They work out the details, they know their people, and together we make a decision.
At this point, there's really nothing ready to discuss on the convenience centers, so could I just get a motion that we empower our county administrator to give him the latitude to implement the policy needed?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Sayer, a second by Mr. Carter. Any more discussion? Public comment?
I made the second.
Y'all tied.
Didn't.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
How about flipping a coin right away?
We're gonna flip a coin. You made the last one, so. Helping him out. Now we'll move on to the administrative offices down here.
Okay, down here, on that end of the building, that's public safety, EMS 911. All public traffic is denied. Nobody, no, no outside person can go in that door. Even between the two departments, 911 and EMS, which is side by side with common doorway. There should be little to no back and forth between that door. Everybody has, has been instructed, when they come to work, bring them enough clothes in their car for about three days, because those positions have to be covered. And that's not, we're not unique in that one. That was kind of a sort of a state's suggestion coming down the pipes. I think the sheriff's office is doing the same thing. I don't know about, not about the three-day rule stuff, but as far as the sign on the door about the public. If you can do it by phone, let's do it by phone, but the public can come to a certain spot and as far as they can go.
And this is, this is outlined stations too, right?
Correct, yeah. Even a station the same way. And we don't, we try to discourage as much as we can, station one, two, going to station three and them co-meeting, we're trying to keep everybody, well, if one crew gets something, we gotta take it out, we can take it out to a three crew. So that's, that's it on, on substations and all. On this end of the building, on the permitting and addressing, that gets the most foot traffic through the door. We've got most everything where they can do it online now, but they either have to be, know how to save it and email it back, or print it and fax it. We're looking and looking at some software that they can just file it and not have to do all that, where it makes a lot, lot less commerce for them. We will take credit card payments for it. We take credit card payment for EMS, we already got their account, there's no extra expense in that. We went through with the bookkeeping to keep it separate, if we can do it. So really, unless there's a question, most of all that stuff can be done online and by the phone. So those, those are able to do that now, but we're trying to make it easier on the public. This end, thankfully, we don't have a lot of, my office gets more foot traffic than anybody else, but we try to, you know, we're getting signed, ready to go for the front door, sending is basically the same thing. Give us a call first if we can work something, if we can take care of your problem with a phone call, we'll do that. If not, we'll, we'll arrange to meet with you somehow. That pretty much covers the general government. Well, we'll get in, we'll get into the other one quick.
Your permitting here could be done if you set your paperwork outside and let somebody take it and fill it out and bring it back and drop it off.
Yeah, well, they can already print it off, website, and have it filled out when they get here if they got a printer.
If they know that.
But that's why, that's why.
If they know that.
Well, well, we got, we got to get the word out, because we're making so many tweaks and changes, we had to, we want to be sure it works before we go advertising it. So, but that's, that's where we're going, and most of it, all but the final click of the software for not having to either email it or print it and scan it and fax it in and all that stuff. Bill, the worst ones are gonna be transportation permits. That's where we need so many documents brought into us. Building permits for a regular house, main document we need's from Health Department. Billy can email those to us electronically and we don't want to totally mean. But we're still working, scratching our heads a little bit on the, on the transportation permit. Addressing can be done online. All they got to do is give us a parcel number and we'll tell them, mark their driveway when you go out from there, and never really have to come face-to-face with anybody and all that stuff.
Really nothing we need to do there. Right? Anything you want us to do there?
I don't, I don't think so. Again, the public and taxpayers pays our salary, we got to figure out a way to, to serve them and we'll do the safest we can, but we still gonna be here doing the new thing.
Yeah, we want to do the least possible damage we can to commerce.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, we want, we really want business to keep going.
Yep. Okay, we'll move on down to the tax assessors. They put together their own thing today. They sent it out to us. I didn't have a problem with it, I don't think anybody else did, I thought it was good. Could I get a motion that we approve that one?
I make a motion.
A motion by Commissioner Sayer, a second by Commissioner Carter. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next one was elections.
Oh, basically the elections has done the same thing. We got, I got a sample of their information there going with it, but it says basically the same thing.
I make a motion that we approve that on the Board of Elections.
I have a motion by Commissioner Teasley to.
I'll give you a second.
A second by Commissioner Carter.
What exactly are we doing? What exactly are we doing?
It's, again, same way, if we're getting people not to come in, make sure we can't, they can't hand it over the phone or whatever.
Are they suspending voting?
Yeah, the state done that. It's already been, the state took care of that.
The state is suspending any of our current time, right now is a busy time for assessors out there. And you've got returns, you've got people filing for exemptions, onstead, compensation, much of everything. All of these forms are online, has Department of Residents website, and we're gonna have a link attached to our county website as well, to those forms.
Okay. I was just gonna speak to the elections issue. The state has determined that the March primary is, it's gonna be held in May, and that advance voting is stopped as of now, that those who have already advanced voted, their vote will be counted, it's all fine. Those votes will be isolated, under, under secure circumstances, they'll be video monitored, and those votes will then be pulled out for count at the time that the next election is held. I'm right about all of that. And I think, to the extent that I'm familiar with how they're handling that, it looks to me like it's gonna work. And, you know, certainly we, just speaking on their behalf, they don't want anything that they do to discourage voting. You know, it's, it's an absolute and cherished fundamental right.
Walter, I have gotten the notice that the state will be mailing out absentee ballots statewide for the counties to encourage that, but that does not mean there will not be any in person voting later, but that is what they encourage.
And, you know, hopefully, the general public will take advantage of that to cast an absentee vote. It's just as valid and it's just as countable as coming down and do it in person. And especially those folks like me who are in the target group by virtue of age or immunocompromised. And that, you know, the, it's, everybody, and once this election actually is held, hopefully by then, we're gonna be in a much more stable position and there'll be less going around. But everybody does need to exercise their own good common sense and know that the voting machines will be disinfected periodically through the day, I think maybe after each vote. It's gonna, it probably will take a little longer because of that, but if everybody will just be patient with it, you know, it's gonna, I think that's the main impact on the elections, aside from the shifting of the March primary to May, I think the main impact on elections is gonna be, the people are just gonna need to be patient because there may be processes that take a little time, like disinfection.
Hey Walter, can you go in touch on how to get the absentee ballot?
The state will send those out to everybody, every registered voter, or they'll send out the applications to every registered voter, so you won't have to do a thing to get the application. Once you get the application, you'll need to fill it out just like you do in any normal year. The, what that, I think what the state will be doing, or may already have done, is to expand the class of people that qualify for an absentee ballot, and basically it will be everybody. You know, it's not gonna be a circumstance where you're out of town during the day or something like that. I mean, it will be a voter choice to make. And the more people that apply for absentee ballots, I think the better everything is. That does create a much greater burden on the Board of Elections staff to process those applications. It could very well be that they may find that they need some extra help, just looking at it down the road. But I still think that it was probably in a lot of people's best interest to take advantage of that opportunity to vote by absentee.
Thank you.
And again, if you've already voted, that's not a problem. Your vote will be counted. Just not on March 1st.
I have a motion by Commissioner Teasley, a second by Commissioner Carter that we approve what the Board of Elections is posted. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. The next one is the library. The library board made the decision that they were gonna close yesterday at two o'clock. We found out about that after the fact, which I have a huge problem with. The fact that we fund that operation seventy seven thousand dollars a year. But we can discuss that later. I did have a conversation with Richard Sanders yesterday about that. But they've made the decision to close. I guess we need to ratify what they've done. Can I get a motion that we?
Just for a point of clarification, Mr. Chairman, I, what I had understood is that they were going to keep at least the skeletal staff there, that it would be closed, but that it will be open for checking out eBooks, digital books. And that computer services will continue to be provided by the wireless access from the library parking lot. You, you'll have to bring your own computer.
Right, and the school board's also got that as one of their, or school system is one of their wifi locations as well. So, can I get a motion that we ratify the library board's decision?
Yes, sir. I give you the motion.
And a motion by Commissioner Carter is our second.
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Sayer. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next one is Recreation Department. There are several groups that do square dancing and other activities. They've all ceased.
Yeah, they've all, they've all self canceled themselves.
From a recreation standpoint, I don't know if there's anything else.
I would say the only other thing we would do is we're probably not gonna allow any more scheduling until this, this is over.
What about Hydra?
Not operating at this time.
So really no action needs to be taken there?
No, I don't, I don't.
Is it posted on the doors down there that, you know, that they can't do that right now until the end of the month or something like that?
Posted on what doors?
No, they had to check, they had, they had to, they volunteered on their own. They called, they called and notified us they wasn't gonna do it.
Just as matter of information, Mr. Chairman, the Little League has been, uh, canceled their opening day for this Saturday. I, I know it was announced from here. I think we oughta, as a public service.
Okay. But that is right.
What about Barnes Academy?
They have ceased operations.
They have ceased too.
Yeah, they're totally out of school as well. And right now we don't even know when Little League is gonna have opening day if they do.
Yeah, if they do.
That's, that's a big concern.
Well, it looks they don't even know when sports is allowed to continue again.
That's right. So that brings us through all the county departments. Is there any more that we need to talk about that we need?
What about fire?
Fire's already been taken care of. Meetings have been.
Basically fire, what they're doing is, is, most of them canceled their, canceled their regular every two week meeting until this, for a week or two till this happens. See what's happening. I'm taking steps on the first responder program. We don't, they won't dispatch out first responders unless they, it's something they can actually do something about. We don't want them running into places and getting, getting infected for no reason. So, and we're still tweaking over those guidelines. There's a lot of people involved in that whole, you got nine one one, you got the fire, you got EMS, you got a lot of people involved. Trying to come up with, with what'll work best and keep those guys and girls safe.
Does somebody have questions?
Yes, Mr. Clare, on court hearings, we canceled the jury trials on March twenty third, twenty seventh, April, March thirtieth, April sixth. We do have one the week of April thirteenth. We're gonna push it to April fourth, see how this order does. But to let everybody know, even though we've cut out juries, we still have a court. Just want y'all to be aware of that. TPOs, emergency hearings, these are things that we have to do. And I speak for Superior Court. I'll let Thomas and Mary speak about theirs, but like yesterday we had court, we had bond hearings. We had to do it. Parks White, Chris Carroll set up a V O, was able to do it. And I'll transfer to anybody tomorrow morning. I have civil motions. I have TPOs and some emergency hearings that we have to do. So the judges are looking at this case by case, or prejudiced, and they'll decide what comes in for civil motions. But even though we don't have jury trials, we still have cases going on. And I'll let Thomas and Mary talk about it.
What about those folks who got jury summons for those cases? Are those, how's that gonna be handled?
They're excused. I run a ad on Facebook. I run it on both radio stations. And I'm basically handling it week by week, trying to confuse people. But if anybody calls and they got going, mail to them for April sixth, I'm going ahead and letting them know that they're excused. They don't have to worry about it. Cause we mailed out to the right now. But again, April thirteenth week, that is a still to go. And if the order goes away, we don't have trial.
All right, anybody else?
Management Council, we have rescheduled April court dates and such as over into the next month of May. Depending on where we're at with the COVID nineteen and we'll go from there, but we have been suggested from our superiors to do the same.
Our May court has been rescheduled. We were actually scheduled to have cases today. Those are gonna be moved to April. Certainly depending on what we have going on between now and then, we will reschedule again if necessary. We are still active and we're still open. We are doing only the things that are mandated that we do. We are not able to issue any fire permits at this time. We wanna make sure that everybody is aware of that. The Sheriff's Department cannot do any fingerprinting down there for us. It is state mandated that those are suspended for thirty days. However, if yours is coming up for renewal, there's gonna be a thirty day window on that. So don't get nervous about it. We're still gonna have time to get you in and get you taken care of.
Chairman, anything? Lisa, if you'll come, come forward please. I'm sorry. Let everybody see you.
I didn't think about this earlier. I'm sorry. With our building, we do have it scheduled for rental for the next two weekends. Do we need to cancel those?
I would.
Okay. All right.
If you want us to put that on the motion.
Yeah.
So we'll be the bad guy?
Yeah.
All right. Can I get a motion that we cancel these meetings, senior center for the, through the thirty first?
Through the thirty first, okay. Cause we do have something coming up in April, but we'll discuss that later.
Motion by Commissioner Carter is our second.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously.
Who'd you have it rented out to, Frank, Gary or somebody?
No, not this time. But while I'm here, I would like to say, we have reached out to all our congregants, as Terrell has said, and we are gonna be talking to them on a weekly basis. We've let them know that if we need, they need us, we're there. And also with our home delivered, we're also wanna be on phone contact with each one of those. So if they need anything that we can provide for them, we're gonna be there to get it to them. And you know, letting them know that transit's still available if they need to get them to the grocery store, doctors or anything like that. So we'll be in contact with each of our clients on a weekly basis.
Okay. We appreciate it. All right, anything for anybody else at county departments? Jim?
What Terrell said about outdoor facilities, y'all wanna include pavilions for family reunions? We have several that are rented coming up.
Between now and March thirty first?
We've got some coming up. Yes, it's, all other reservations have been canceled.
I would call them and just find out what the federal mandate is, size of the product. And preferably they'd make their own decision.
I just don't know how big a crowd they would have. That's.
And if we need to address it, we got a meeting Tuesday night, we can address it Tuesday. Okay, thank you. Anything else, Tom?
Yeah, well, we hadn't discussed the road department or any road maintenance issues. How's that gonna be?
Uh, they're gonna be business as usual. I've told them to cut down any face to face meetings, so. So no call, I appreciate if y'all would call them, say you need to go talk to so and so about their pothole. Don't be out in the fresh air all the time. And if we can keep the face to face down, that's about as good as we can do at road department. But again, I told them not, no face to face meetings. Do it, we can call them on the phone or whatever, but don't, don't be in, up in somebody's face.
One other thing too?
Just to chime in, you know, the, um, my office is a, is a private office, private law practice, but to the extent that I serve as county attorney, it does have public implications and while I rarely am visited by anybody, unless they're really mad at one of y'all. Or, or Terrell, or me, or many others. But while I'm rarely visited, I, I do wanna say that we are all, will, will be available to anybody by our telephone number during normal business hours. And for the most part, my office will be there, but we are limiting admission. Y'all can come if you want.
Long we're not sneezing?
Yeah, remind me.
Sneezes okay, call it back.
Well, before we get away from this, Terrell and I have talked some this afternoon that we can take care of this next week. He's gonna be reaching out to, to get a backup possibly in place in the event of something were.
Talking about me?
Yeah.
I, I already done it.
Okay, just so they know.
Yeah, just, I'm pulling an old rusty Dan Jergen out of retirement. If something happens to me and he can come in and help me, that's about what we're gonna do. If we need him, if I need him, we'll call him. If, if we don't, we won't. But he came in today and I got him set up with everything he'll need in case I fall out tomorrow. Somebody can take care of it and keep on going.
And the emergency management.
Emergency management, correct. And, and in this kind of cases, that job's more important than being a county administrator. And that's why I want him looking out from my backside so I didn't miss something I should've caught. So it's better to have a couple of sets of eyes on stuff instead of just me getting, I'm doing good to write a, an add in to that with somebody talking to me.
I just wanna make sure that we, we got that word out there too, cause there's been a lot of things going on and a lot of moving parts. And then I'm gonna ask you, Terrell, just for the general public, if, if we have a confirmed case, kinda walk somebody, walk the group here through how that would be handled.
Okay, well, as of this afternoon, the testing procedures, you gotta be checked by your healthcare provider. Who are your doctor is, or ready clinic or whatever. Let me get the word out to public too, what I've said before was absolutely a must. Don't just pop into a physician's office, to a ready care, to a hospital ER unannounced. Call ahead. They'll have a procedure in place to meet you and, and keep you safe and not, and keep the other patients safe. It's real important for people to do that. To call before they go. If you've tested, the physician has to order the test and it depends on where they have you tested at. We notified today that the health district, each health district is gonna set up one drive up testing site. And each health district or ten districts over the state. That may be in games or for us, whatever. They didn't give out the exact locations yet. But the way it works, the physician has to evaluate you over the phone. He can be over the phone. He has to fill out their computer program. They evaluate the doctor's stuff and they say, okay, we, they qualify for to have a test or don't qualify to have a test. And then if it don't qualify, the physician finishes up and then, and it goes on. If they do qualify, they're issued a, a number to take with them to that check site and they'll pull the test. And if they hit positive, the patient herself is, then it becomes a strictly a, a public health issue. Same way as the TB or anything like that. Public health takes over the overlooking of that patient. If they need to be hospitalized, the hospital does the hospital stuff. As far as the, the quarantining in place, self quarantine, the health department takes care of all that. They do the checking on all that. They keep up with it. They keep a check on the patient. And by far, by far, the most of these positives are at home in self quarantine. If they don't have a problem, if they wanna separate from their family, the state has, should be by Friday, if my count's right, about forty campers. They've got nine at Hard Labor Creek and I think they put twenty six at G Stick in Forsyth that they should have ready to open up Friday. So, once they're, once they're diagnosed and you got a positive on them, they come under the control of the state. So the state is, if they can't stay at home, the state has places for these people to go and we'll wait out there two weeks or whatever it is. So that's kinda the way it works. And I wanna stress too, that everybody don't need to be tested. If you got drakoff, severe sore throat, fever, call your doctor. Call your doctor. The doctor won't gonna make the decision whether or not you fit the criteria or have a need to be tested. There's still regular flu out there. There's still strep throat out there. There's still cold signs. There's still lots of other stuff out there. Your doctor's gotta try to differentiate that from, from possible corona. So now, before anybody's tested for that, they gotta have a, a negative strep test and a negative flu test before they'd even consider the Corona test. So it's not a quick process. It's three to four days process to get a result back on the test. So you, and you'll, everybody's talking about how many tests been done. It just shows right there, there've been fifteen hundred tests performed in the state of Georgia. So far during the whole thing, fifteen hundred tests. And out of that, we had, was it two nineteen? I'll put it back up in just a second. And for people that want the real accurate information, go to the Georgia Department of Public Health website. They update it every day at twelve, by twelve o'clock every day with every county. How many cases in each county, how many deaths, age groups, all of the information that. For God's sake, don't get it off Facebook. The Facebook, Facebook call, and I have no idea why anybody would wanna put stuff like that out there to call, try to cause a panic. But ninety nine percent of what you see on Facebook is false. Go to the CDC site to find out what you need to do. Go Georgia Public Health sites, see what you need to do. And, and, and don't panic. Take care of yourself, take care of the others, but do not panic.
Whenever me Utah Wednesday was working on them trailer sites down there at Forsyth Wednesday, they probably got them left going.
Yeah, they, they supposed to be up and running by tomorrow. They just, what is today?
On the call yesterday with Governor Kemp, we had, he reported that the, the case that had been at Hard Labor State Creek, the individual had been, had fully recovered and was back at work yesterday.
And that's what's not getting out there. The folks is getting, getting, standing in quarantine times. The by far, by far, the majority of them is, is getting, getting there long enough for whatever symptoms they may have to go and go. And have two negative tests twenty four hours apart and then go back, back to life. That's the, that's the whole deal. We, we hear about the horrible bad ones, boy, that makes the news. But, but the other one was nobody ever hears about it. That's really the mass amount of people.
How many people recovered ought to be in them statistics and way though.
Well, you don't know. I mean, I, I'm not gonna go there.
Okay, anything else? We're gonna cover this community development block grant for the.
Can I go, kinda quick go through what we can do if we cannot have people in this room and have a meeting?
Yep, need to. This'll be in the event that we, we'll continue to have meetings. This is an alternative way where the public can participate. We can do it electronically.
And everybody in business is familiar with the habits, go to meeting. I mean, it's, it's not, it's not rocket science. I, I'm not sure I'm smart enough to operate it.
That pretty much cuts me out then.
That ain't gonna screw up the short for us. Does it every time? What, what it'll do, what we'll do is we'll set a meeting up on go to meeting and on our website we'll post a. What it'll do, what we'll do is we'll set a meeting up on GoToMeeting, and on our website, we'll post a... I'll set up the meetings, and then we go to meetings, side of it. And what it'll do, it'll give a ID number, that meeting ID number, propose that meeting ID number. This'll take up to two-hundred-and-fifty people on at a time. And anybody who wants to meet, they just go to the, go to the meeting app, click on it, they download the app on the computer, phone, whatever. They go to meeting app. They just type that meeting number, ID number in there, and take their permit. They can hear, they can see, if they're, if they're, oh, Jim doesn't got something he wanna talk about when he said, well, they can talk back. That's Plan B C, that number. Now, I'm paying for this, so if we need to use the department head, the phone, it's not gonna cost us anymore. So when we're busy and we need to all get together, let's do it.
So this kind of Tuesday would be hearings?
Yeah. Unless something changes. But with this suit and the press, with this work to do?
Yeah, I mean, as long as we can...
I mean, we can re-record the whole meeting on here.
Well, we'll still be, there'll still be videos.
We're all, can be broadcast on YouTube at the same time.
Yeah, sure.
We, we gotta, we gotta carry on business with ours. And believe it, this is the most open board commissioners or county you'll ever find, trying to keep that public information.
But you'll be able to view the live stream of it, and so will anybody, anybody else in the world, rip it down. You know, if they can duck in.
I hope, I hope we don't come to this, but I gotta have something set in place.
Backup plan. And basically, back when it was, no, hit one more thing and I'll hurt us. But there's the website. That is the accurate, true and accurate information as of that time of day. It's on, all you gotta do is just go to the main website. There's a link on it on the front page. This updates every case, every county, how many in each county's got a positive, all the way down. Now, since this one came out, I think we seen on the news, like we had two more deaths in Alton. But so tomorrow, it'll probably show three deaths instead of one. But if you have to know the people who fucked, tell them to get the real stuff. Don't, don't make up or hear this and think there, hear one, talk to her ten. And that causes, removes the amount of panic that's about, that's no need is.
That's all. Okay. The next item is a community development block grant for the water authority. As part of that, I have a conflict of interest in it. I've gotta read a statement.
Mr. Chairman, before you do that, if I might just say that this is, on a highly technical level, a conflict. It is no substantive or material conflict at all. There is a requirement though, with federal, in connection with federal procurement processes or procedures, that this be disclosed and that you will not actually undertake to vote on it, and that the vice chairman will sign any documents. But I wanna stress to anybody that has access to my words that this is not a material conflict. It is not substantive. It's just a happens, it's a coincidence. And it's the same, the same thing has happened before with, with another commissioner, and it was done the same way.
So as required by federal conflict of interest regulations, I'm publicly disclosing, disclosing that my father-in-law and mother-in-law own and live at one fifteen Akins-Lunsford Road in Hart County's proposed FY 2020 CDBG target area number one. The target areas were not yet determined when the board of commissioners passed the resolutions to apply for the CDBG funds. Since that vote, the Hart County Water and Sewer Authority, the project engineer, and the grant writer worked utilizing the county's comprehensive plan and the Hart County Water and Sewer Authority's plans to develop a project that would be eligible for CDBG funding and meet the greatest need in our county for clean water and fire protection. Therefore, I was not involved in the selection of the proposed target areas. Additionally, I will abstain from voting on any future issues concerning this project if it is funded. Further, I will not sign any of the CDBG application forms or letters, and the vice chairman, Mr. Marshall Sayer, will be the authorized official signing the forms. That's it.
And you'll be signing that letter?
Yep. All righty. We just wanted to get that taken care of, because this is moving forward. Is there anything else that we need to address tonight? Public comment? Anybody have anything they'd like to address the board with? If not, I appreciate everybody's time. This is an ongoing, moving target. Hopefully, we won't have any cases and life goes on. But we'll continue to monitor this very closely. We'll, we will be communicating and putting out information. And our next meeting will be Tuesday night at five-thirty.
Six.
Six, that's right. I'm sorry. Thank you. With that being said, if there's nothing else, could I get a motion that we adjourn?
I'll make that motion and we'll adjourn.
I have a motion by Commissioner Teasley, a second by Commissioner Carter. Any more discussion? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. All righty.
We'll see y'all. Y'all take it easy now. Bye.
See you, Jim.
I'll see you, man.